I'd like to call this meeting in order. First, I'd like to welcome the visitors on the livestream and in person here for the Cross Lex regular school board meeting. First of all, let's do the pledge allegiance. Roll call. John Maxey.
Here.
John O'Hare.
Here.
Mike Knoll.
Here.
Amy Stillson.
Here.
Dennis Gardner.
Here.
And I'm here. Absent Patty Schin. Audience comments? Cassette agenda. I'd like to see a motion and a support for the Cassette agenda.
It's a move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported by Amy to prove the Cassette agenda as presented. Roll call. Gardner?
Yes.
Maxey?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Stillson?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Motion carries. Noted in the Cassette agenda is appointment of staff. Colette, you want to address that?
Sure. So we want to welcome Katie Tomlinson.
And Katie's here with us tonight. We just want to welcome her to officially to the Cross Lex staff. She's been a part of the staff for many years. She is our varsity cheer coach and actually taught kindergarten at Meyer last year as a building sub. And she's been working hard on her certification and we're excited to have her certification come in. And so she is officially being hired as a kindergarten teacher in the district. So welcome Katie and congratulations. We're excited to have you officially with us in the teacher group.
Welcome Katie.
Thank you very much. So Thursday of this week is our last day of summer school for middle school and elementary. This is their third week and so they're wrapping that up and then they'll have a one-week break before they're back for the first day of school, which is quickly approaching. The first day back for students is actually two weeks from today. First day back for staff is next Monday officially. You've probably received the annual focus newsletter in your paper and if you did not, there are some extra copies in the back or in the building offices as well. So feel free to pick one of those up if you did not happen to get one in your local paper. That also lists registration dates. So we have the registration event coming up tomorrow, transportation information, food information, building contact information. But you can also get all of that from our Facebook pages or the district website as well. Just as an announcement, which we are very excited about, the district back in the spring applied for the CEP program, which is for food service. And we were granted the CEP program, which is exciting because that is going to give all of our students free breakfast and lunch. We've done the free universal breakfast for years now, but to also have the free universal lunch is a tremendous benefit for all of our staff or all of our students. So we are excited to have that for our families and our community. That will take place right off the bat. So thank you, Ms. Peters, for your work on that and for Ms. Sherbet and their work on that and Mr. Bishop. The middle school and high school have registration events tomorrow and that information on that you can find either on Facebook or on the website down in the live feed. Students will be able to get their picture taken, they can get their schedules, test out their locker, pick up their Chromebooks. So lots of good things going on tomorrow at the middle school and high school. The following week, we have open houses on Tuesday, the 22nd, for all buildings. Check the times on those. They're not all exactly the same. The elementary, I believe, is four to six and the middle and high school are five to seven. So they're staggered just a little bit in case you have to get to multiple buildings. Staff has been coming into the buildings to set up classrooms and as I said earlier, their first official day is next Monday. We'll be having our annual back-to-school meeting and building and district professional development next week. I'd like to acknowledge the custodians and maintenance and grounds for all the work they did this summer, getting the building ready, cleaned up, sanitized, the grounds are looking good, taking care of any repairs that needed to happen, and we are ready to start the school year. So I just want to acknowledge their work and tell them thank you because we appreciate all of the work that they did over the summer to get us ready for this next school year. Last year at this time, we were actually discussing in August, blocking off one of the driveways off of Peck Road. We had three driveways off of Peck Road and it was confusing and people weren't sure which one to go into and we were talking about blocking one of those to see how it went. Well, it went well and we have officially taken out one of the driveways. So there is a driveway that comes into the middle school and a driveway that comes in for the high school and there's only two driveways now coming off of Peck Road. So that makes it easier for visitors who weren't sure which one they're supposed to be pulling into. New signage is coming, so it will be clear from the road which one goes to which building. So we're excited to see that done and the grass is coming in nicely. It almost looks like it wasn't even there. Last week, the Santa Lat County Fair hosted their first Differently Able Day. Mr. Wood, Ms. Murray and I were able to volunteer from Cross Lex. Up at Differently Able Day, the fair opened early and this was hosted by the ISD and CMH and the Fair Board. This was a fantastic free event for our families that have students with special needs. It gave them an opportunity to get in before the fair was really busy. It was a much quieter environment. The sound was off on the rides. They had help getting on. Lunch was included, a tee-shirt. They had games open, they got game tickets. It was just a very nice event for the families and they were very thankful. So that was their first go-around with it. They kind of planned it quickly because they were hoping to start it next year and they said, you know what? We think we can make this happen this year. So we were excited to be able to get up there and help support that event and look forward to helping again next year. So we want to say thank you to all the people that helped to make that happen. It was really great for the families that were there. This past Saturday was the Crosswell Lexington 50-plus reunion. They welcomed newcomers from the class of 1973 this year. I was honored to be their guest speaker and share some district highlights of what's been going on. So it was nice to see so many former pioneers or current pioneers all in the same place. Also on Saturday, there was a community support for students with the back-to-school expo that was hosted by the Crosswell Wesleyan Church. They had inflatables, lunch, free haircut, sports, physicals, inflatables, prize giveaways. Ms. Murray was there with GSRP staff, giving out information about preschool. And we just want to tell all of the volunteers in the church, thank you very much. All the students walked out of there with lots of school supplies and all kinds of things that they needed for school and just had a fun, free event for the day. So thank you for all of the volunteers and for all of the people that donated to help make that event happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the curriculum instruction HR report.
Thank you, Mr. Nowisky. Am I on? Okay. Just to build on what Ms. Moody said there, we would like to officially welcome Ms. Tomlinson to the Pioneer team. So again, welcome, Ms. Tomlinson. And just to continue to build on what Ms. Moody said there, we are excited for the school year to get going. We've been working hard to finalize our professional development plans for the teachers coming back August 21st through the 23rd. Our professional development days will focus on preparing for the upcoming pilots, bright space training for our secondary staff, updating our curriculum and pacing guides, data analysis to allow for interventions to start earlier in the school year. I know that was a big focus for the elementary coming up. And we really wanted to give our teachers some time for assessment, revision and creation as well. These three vitally important areas is just something that we really wanted to return back to. We feel like we've gotten past that COVID where that COVID kind of threw everything for a loop as far as those curriculum and planning processes. So we want to return to that, the heart of what we do, teaching and learning. We've been very busy. We had some interviews today as a matter of fact, making sure we had a full staff to start the school year. So we interviewed today for the open fourth grade Meyer position and we'll continue to make progress on that position. Tomorrow morning, we're going to be interviewing for the elementary music position. The high school business position, we're still working on this one. We've, we have not received any qualified applicants for that position. So we may be looking at absorbing some of these classes for the first semester, hoping maybe an applicant will come in and we could resume that full schedule for the second semester. The high school secretary and counseling office secretary, Ms. Burns and her team have been making progress on those two positions as well and hopefully we'll have those filled. We had that position, the high school secretary position, filled. She ended up backing out of that position, so we've been kind of scrambling to try to get that position filled again. We did want to give an update on the previously posted kindergarten position. We met again this morning just to review and look at our kindergarten enrollment. Remember, we had Ms. Kerrigan fill that open Title I, which opened that position. And in previous years, we've had three sections of kindergarten at both Meyer and Frostic. At this point, based on our enrollment and the numbers we have, it's looking like we would need a total of five sections. So at this point, we are not planning to replace that open kindergarten position. One thing that we are bringing in or back, it was previously held, was developmental kindergarten. So we're continuing to move forward with this developmental kindergarten programming. This need kind of surfaced last year as we had a group of students in GSRP and Pioneer preschool that we just think aren't quite ready for kindergarten yet and could use one more year to improve their skills. So this group of DK students would be one of the five sections of the kindergarten. So we'd have two at Meyer, two at Frostic, and then one section of developmental kindergarten for a total of five sections. We also had summer school. We wanted to provide the board with a brief update on that. The high school held their summer school in June. Students attend summer school at the high school for credit recovery or credit advancement. A total of 46 classes were completed, earning 23 credits. The middle school, which is currently running, had 37 students participating. They have a fifth, sixth and seventh and eighth grade group. Students rotate between the three teachers throughout the day. And the middle school programming focused on math and literacy skills based on their NWA and IXL scores. Finally, the elementary is also hosting some summer learning. The focus is on building literacy and math skills based on those previous assessment results. Students going into grades one through four are attending and teachers and instructional aides are utilizing small group instruction and hands-on activity. So we want to thank our staff that has helped make summer school a reality for our students as well as the students for attending. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
A quick question. What building is the DK section of kindergarten in? Is that in Frostic or is it in Meyer?
Yeah, we're planning on hosting it in Frostic. Yep.
So if, is there a student in Lexington that wanted to be a part of that? They would have to get busing or their parents would drop them off?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Next up on the agenda is Mr. Bishop with the chief financial officer report.
Good evening, everyone. Not much to update the board for this month. It's crunch time for the audit, which is scheduled to happen the week of the 28th of August. This week and next week will primarily be devoted towards completing the needed work for their field work in preparation for them to come that Monday. And then that will be for the week of the Monday prior to Labor Day for that whole week. So that's what all my time has been spent on. So that's it. Thanks.
Any questions? Thanks, Mr. Bishop. District staff report.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Evening.
Good evening.
All right. Building and grounds report. The Meyer parking lot, if you guys have seen, we're coming close to the end with that. All the curb approaches and sidewalks have been abored. There have been some setbacks with soft spots being located and filled in, taken care of, and an old septic tank that was found and filled back in. So we will not have any more issues with that. The Meyer hot water heater was installed two weeks ago. This morning, it passed inspection, so we're all set with that. National Time and Signal finished up their project here at the high school Saturday. So that's no more fire alarms going off. Centas was on-site today for fire extinguisher inspections district-wide, which went well with only a couple needing hydro testing throughout the district. Another crew from Centas was at the high school doing repairs to the fire suppression system. And last Monday, I met with an engineer from Frenchen Associates to go over the electrical we have out at the stands so they can prepare their drawings for the press box with accurate information. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of things we've been working on and started this week. We've been, we, excuse me, been working through some of the, I call this application week and not college application week. It's more like, you know, making sure all the HMH, the Go Math, IXL, all his current rosters. Just got done doing one for Mr. Wood on the TCI. That was, that looks pretty cool. Couple of other things we did was finished up some Chromebook stuff. Unfortunately, I didn't get the new batch in time to have them ready for the start of the school year. So we're running with what they had. The kids have perfectly good Chromebooks. We did the same thing I did last year. We filled all the lockers with their devices and chargers and stuff like that. So we'll be doing some cleaning up around here, just kind of getting rid of some recycling and that type of thing and just kind of preparing for the school year. So that's all I got for tonight. Right? Any questions?
Thanks, Dallas.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to share a couple of things with you. I gave, in my graduation speech, I gave an update as to accomplishments of class of 23. Those accomplishments weren't over, so I'd like to give you a few of those. From the Career Center in particular, I just got these numbers last week. I think at the graduation, I told you that 25 students earned their certification and six additional students earned their CDL. Since graduation, students have finished some of those. They've gone beyond your graduation date to work. 31 students from Cross Lex earned a certification in some, some programs, CNA welding, all kinds of different things, and a total of nine have completed the CDL and one is still in progress. So I'm just really proud of our kids and those numbers are higher from graduation, proud of them from going beyond the graduation point to go ahead and wanted to share that with you. And also, Ms. Moody mentioned the 50-plus class reunion and that triggered in my mind that I am hosting the class of 1983 on the, at the August 24th football game. I planned this like four or five months ago, but the August 24th football game, the class of 83 is going to come in, do a tour with me at 5:30 before so they can see how the building has changed, things like that. And then they will be attending the varsity football game that evening. I met with the boosters tonight. They're going to do a little recognition. We're going to do something at halftime. I've been working on that with Officer Wormlinger, so that will be a, just a little special event at a football game, thought you might like to know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. I usually don't come to these, but I think it's about time I do, just because we really have a lot of fun things to share in food service. I'm really looking forward to offering breakfast and lunch at no cost to all of our students. In anticipation of that, we did order some stand-up coolers and freezers to store the food because we will need that. The new serving line over at Frostic looks absolutely amazing. We have a fresh paint job, so as soon as I get some artwork hung up, I'll be sure to share some pictures with you. Besides that, I'm just looking forward to a great year with a, with a great team. Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
I wanted to let you know that Mr. Kozel wanted to be here tonight, but he is on another school board and so he is at their meeting tonight. But he did send me the number and let me know that we have 199 students who are participating in fall sports.
Next up on the agenda is old business, business, we have none. For new business, first item on the agenda is to approve the 2023-2024 Student Handbook for Elementary and Secondary.
So you've received the copies of the elementary and student handbooks, elementary and secondary student handbooks. They had a few revisions to them. In the elementary, it was basically updating a bell time. There was a little change to it. So we updated the bell time, updated board member names. There weren't really too many changes to the elementary handbook. The high school handbook or the, and middle school, the secondary handbook had a few more changes to it. It was really doing a lot of cleanup in it. So there were some redundancies in there. Under cheating, it might talk about plagiarism in two sections. So we tried to do some cleanup, so it was a little clearer and less redundant. And then some of the discipline things that were in there, we put them in alphabetical order, so they're a little easier to find instead of a random order. There was one section where there was a grievance procedure that was taken out because it's listed in another space and that was per the attorney's recommendation. And so that was why that section was taken out. But for the most part, the things, things stayed the same, but there were just a few of those things that was a lot of, just kind of cleanup things to make it a little more Questions? The building principals are here too, in case there were any questions and they could provide some input on some of the rationale with it as well.
The Title IX grievance procedure, you're saying it's somewhere else on the district website?
It is on the district website, but it's also in the administrative guidelines.
Need a motion and support to approve the 2023-2024 Student Handbook for Elementary and Secondary.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023-2024 Student Handbook for both the elementary and the secondary schools. Support.
This will be a roll call. Maxey?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Stillson?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
I'm a yes. No nays. Motion carries. Next item is to approve the MMCSA lease for the 2023-2024 school year. Ms. Colette, could you give some background on that?
Absolutely. The NUMSCA lease is actually for Head Start. So this has been a longstanding contract that we have had with Head Start. They contract with us to utilize one of our classroom spaces. In the past, sometimes it's been at Meyer, then we needed some of that classroom space, so they moved over to Geiger and they've been at Geiger for a few years now. Head Start is a three-year-old preschool program that provides some opportunities for students.
Any questions or concerns? Looking for a motion support to approve the MMCSA lease for the 2023-2024 school year.
I'll make a motion to approve the NUMSCA lease for the 23-24 school year.
Support? This will be a roll call. O'Hare?
Yes.
Stillson?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Maxey?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
I'm a yes. There's zero nays. Motion carries. Next up on the agenda is to approve the contract for the Pioneer High School principal.
This is the contract. You saw this last year as well. There weren't any changes to it, but it is continuing on and extending the contract with Stacy Murray to take care of the principal role at Pioneer High School.
Questions, concerns? Need a motion and support to approve the contract for the Pioneer High School principal as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for Pioneer High School principal. Support.
This will be a roll call. Stillson?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Maxey?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
I'm a yes. No nays. Motion carries. Next up on the agenda is approve the revised contract for the Teamsters, which includes the cooks and drivers.
And this is actually just going to be the drivers, the cooks. We didn't have to do a revision to. There was just a clerical error. The whole contract stayed the same, other than the dollar amount on the end, the percentage was actually calculated twice on the original contract. It was very clear when we did the negotiations that it was the 3% raise, it was just miscalculated in the contract. So it's, because it's a two-year contract, we didn't want to leave it like that for the two years. It was just cleaner to fix it upfront. So this is just to revise and do a clean copy for that.
I have a question.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Keith, is this contract that I'm looking at here, is there a P scale in this contract somewhere?
There's not.
So it's just a 3% raise?
Correct.
Is there an hourly wage that they're making in this contract somewhere?
At the very, at the very back of the contract, the very last page, I think it outlines it. Keep going. Right there.
Gotcha. Okay. So then for 2024, are you guys going to do a wage opener with them?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Looking for a motion and a support to approve the revised contract for the Teamsters, drivers only.
So, or?
That was Dennis.
Move by, no, order by Dennis. That's probably helpful for Gavin to reiterate that.
Roll call. Gardner?
Yes.
Maxey?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Stillson?
Yes.
I'm a yes. No nays. Next up on the agenda is discuss the board meeting livestream.
This is an opportunity for the board to discuss. There have been some comments here and there, but whether we continue the livestream, do not continue the livestream. That was initially started during COVID when people weren't able to get together in bigger groups. We know that it does cause some challenges, especially if we have a Zoom meeting at the same time, if someone is Zooming in, that's difficult, very difficult to do tech-wise during a livestream meeting. It does provide an opportunity for people who are at home, but we would prefer to see you in person, definitely. But there are some pros and cons with it, but this is a discussion time for the board to decide what they would like to do with that.
So if, if we did not livestream, would we still continue to record and then post the recording? That's my question.
And that's really part of the discussion. That's a possibility.
How much time and effort does that take?
I guess that's a good Dallas question. He's doing that on the back end, so I can't really answer for him, but it, it does take some additional time. I know.
Just to record it and post it later?
Correct. And it, it limits where we have it also. I know moving, today we moved here because the middle school media center is set up for the registration event in the morning and there was a lot of work to get that set up for everyone from, for early morning. So the first call then was to Dallas and ask, what's your next easiest space to do this in? Because it needs to be set up and it's a lot of work to move everything.
Can we track the number of views that people watch? I may happen to have that information available. So during, I don't know how much you want to talk about, but during a typical livestream meeting, we'll have five, five or so people watching, maybe up to nine, and usually parents. One's my wife, one's Mr. Moody as well, so that type of thing. We don't have a whole lot, but the next day there seems to be one people that watch.
So, so I know that's a little bit of a loaded question. There may be more information that you were looking for, but in total, the next day is usually when we see most of our views or later on into the night. So we typically peak at about 40 or so within that first week and then some things people might review or go back. This, this particular report I printed has the most popular videos sorted first. They typically are probably not, you know, recent videos, but just some ideas. And then the next page is just what some of our neighbors do as far as board meeting goes and live streaming and stuff like that, so.
Dallas?
Yep.
The third column over watch time, what is that telling me?
Like how many, like if you were to like count up every minute and every set of eyeballs looked at it?
Okay. Okay. Because the average view is obviously how long each person individually?
That's exactly it too. So like somebody might be watching it, just go to what they were looking for and then stop watching.
And then stop, right.
Yep.
Subscribers on there, that's how many people are actively watching.
Well, yeah, we have about 500 subscribers. So those people are registered with YouTube and say that they subscribe to the Cross So, those people are registered with YouTube and say that they subscribe to the Kraus Lex channel. But, um, quite often, so those registered people, um, you know, might only accompany like the smallest portion of the, the, the viewing audience for that particular, I almost called it episode, for that particular board meeting. Um, I would have to say that I noticed a weird thing earlier today. Um, and just kind of just reviewing some notes is that, that, that particular meeting that's listed number one is getting traction again. It's, it had like 10, 10 views this week, so I'm not quite sure. This is an issue from two years ago, that, you know, people, it's still out there. People are still watching it, so.
So, on your second page, does not video meeting, so no schools in Tuscula, Huron, or Sanlaco?
That's correct.
Do any videoing?
Nope.
Except us?
Correct.
Currently.
And KPEC and Marysville don't either. Those, and those are the, like, other B-WAG-type schools. Yeah, Yale doesn't. I'm sorry. Yep, Yale's, Yale should be on this list as well. Yep. I forgot that, Mr. Gardner. Yeah, you're right. I did look that one up. Port Huron has one done by an outside company. Everything blue water, TV. They do theirs. So...
So, is Richmond the only school that actually does it live? Besides us right now?
Um...
Because it says Port Huron not live, Algonquin not live, East China not live?
Correct.
Richmond livestreams.
Yep.
That's the only one? Gotcha.
So, the average else right now is like nine people watch the board meeting online?
Yep, like, right now. I don't know what we have right now. I don't know. I'm looking at the camera. But, yeah, it's like nine or so. I mean, we, if we got kids here, you know, we're doing Student of the Month, you know, and, and we had the media center set up differently, you know, where in COVID, we, you know, the chairs were further apart. We couldn't get as many people in there. You know, we had that rule that we couldn't have like 50 people in a, whatever it was. So, I mean, that's where all this stuff came from, you know? So... I don't know if I wanna go there, Mr. O'Hare. Um, I mean, it's a nice thing to have. I think Ms. Moody said it right. I mean, it's certainly a nice thing. Um, I know some of the staff members like it, too, but it's kind of, um, the other side of it is, it'd be nice to be actually here and be involved in what's going on as well, too.
How much time?
Um, we have...
We mentioned earlier, how much time is involved on the backend that we don't see that you're doing?
Right. I probably have a couple hours into it today.
That's the livestream, or just that you're just gonna post it now?
Um, so, yeah, if I was gonna just record it and post it later, um, it'd probably be, frankly, a little bit more automated. It might be something where I just have a button that says record and stop, and it might not be, um, um, it might, it would, it wouldn't be able to, um, how do I say this? They'd probably have to, you know, get the file, you know, trim it up, you know, 'cause we probably don't want it running all night long or that type of thing, 'cause I notice sometimes the pixel light cameras don't shut off right away. Same type of things. We'd have to just maybe a, a few minutes getting the file, uh, running it through a program, chopping it up, and then uploading it to YouTube, probably like another hour, hour and a half or so. You know, if, you know, but then, if that's the morning after, and then usually in the morning, they've got, you know, a few people wanting to talk or get some, you know, get some tech issues done, taken care of first, so.
Thoughts, ideas?
I guess my thought would be, if it saves time, digital livestream, I'd be in favor of recording it, posting it for one more year, track the number of views. I think people like transparency, and if you say, "We're not gonna do it anymore," all of a sudden, it's like, "What are you trying to do?" And, uh, sure, they can come to the meeting, but a lot of people are following my TV rather than going to, so, uh, I'd keep it for another year if views continue to decline. I mean, if this is the, if this list is the most popular, you got seven, seven meetings in 2023 that are on this list.
Right.
Yeah, so, if this, if this list was mainly during the height of COVID, or was 2021 or something, you know, who was watching it?
I agree with Mr. O'Hare on that. Um, I do agree if we just suddenly today said, "Oh, we're not gonna livestream and we're not gonna record," people might be like, "Well, what the heck? What are you trying to hide?" So, if we ditch the livestream, go with the recording, and like you said, track it for another year, track at least for six months, see if people are now starting to watch it. But I went back to the 2023, the most popular one, the average views on that one were only six minutes. So, people were only looking at six minutes of the board meeting before they were done. So, I think that would be a fair thing to eliminate livestream, record, and then track those numbers and see if we even need to keep doing that.
Dennis? Mike?
I see. We amend the agenda to make a motion and vote on. I'd, I'd say give it a vote, but...
Does it need a vote? Does it need a vote?
I think it needs a vote.
It needs a vote?
Yes, I'll amend the agenda.
Did we vote to record them in the first place? Or do we just start doing that? I'm just wondering. Like, way back when, when we started recording them, did we vote to do that, or did we just decide to do that? I don't, I don't know.
I don't recall.
I think we didn't have a choice. If we wanted to hold a meeting, we had to do it.
Yeah, because we had to do it from our residence.
Yeah.
When COVID was in, and we had to do it by Zoom on everybody.
Okay. So, do you need a motion to amend the agenda? Are you ready to vote? Didn't access anything?
Noel, your idea?
What Mr. O'Hare just said, I just did the math, that's 13% of the videos when it was Thursday, year 23. I personally am not in favor of the livestream. Probably long-term, I'd like to see it go away, just because I know this has happened already this year, where media has taken things out of context and not premised accordingly. And I think there's something to be said for that communication between whether it's you or Superintendent Moody. I, I think they need to have direct communication with you, rather than cherry picking things off the videos. So, I, I'm in favor of doing away with it completely, but I can understand if we wanted to go for a six-month or to a year trial to see what we'd get for views and go from that point. But I, I, I don't like how people can manipulate video either. To this point, fortunately, I don't think I've had that, but you can have that happen as well.
Maxie?
You also gotta remember, we were advised by Rod Green to stop. He's our, he's our representative from the school board, you know, from Michigan Association of School Board, so I, I think he, you know, he's been in this business a lot longer than all this.
I don't remember what was his reason.
I, I don't remember the exact reason, but I remember him telling us that he highly recommended that we stop the livestream and stop recording. I think it was the number one reason that he came up with was the manipulation of the media. And taking what they wanted to hear.
So, we need a motion and support to amend the agenda to do a vote on this.
I move we amend the agenda, so we can...
We'll get to that.
Support that.
That was you, Dennis, as support to? This be a roll call to amend the agenda. Maxie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Stillson?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
I'm a yes. No nays. Motion carries. Now, we need a motion. Do we do a six-month? Do we get rid of it completely and end it today? All videos? Or do we do a, stop the livestream, do recordings for six months? Have Dallas do a study for the six months and come back to us with a presentation on what is being watched in the six months from today? O'Hare's good with a one-year, six-month. Stillson's good with a six-month or a one-year. And Noel's good with a six-month. But it's all in favor to end the livestream, though, and record it. But are we going to post? Are we gonna give Dallas a timeframe to post this video back online? Do we say 24 hours? Do we, what direction do we give Dallas if we do record this?
I personally would steer clear of 24 hours, 'cause things come up.
I think that's a bad, kind of cooling off period.
Well, the other thing is, the first time he misses it, there's gonna be that one person that is gonna raise holy hell about it for whatever reason.
So, a reasonable amount of time?
Forty-eight to seventy-two.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think two, you know, forty-eight to seventy-two would be reasonable, now.
Do you wanna make that motion, then?
I will make the motion that we eliminate livestream and the video recording will be posted within forty-eight to seventy-two hours after the meeting.
For six months, or?
No. I like six months. For a six-month time frame.
Do we have a support on that motion by Mr. Noel?
No support.
This be a, by a roll call? Noel?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Stillson?
Yes.
Gardner?
No.
Maxie?
No.
I'm a yes. Nays, non-motion carries. Next on the agenda is to discuss the board policy regarding purchasing. I think that was in the cassette, or not in your cassette agenda, but in the board motion received, uh, with that last wording paragraph that we added in there about separating invoices to succeed to $7,500. Does everybody get a chance to review that? We do need to amend the agenda to make a motion to approve that adoption of the policy. So, I'll make the motion to amend the agenda to vote on the board policy that was presented and correct it by Clark Hill.
I'll support that.
Roll call to amend the agenda. O'Hare?
Yes.
Stillson?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Maxie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
I'm a yes. No nays. Motion carries. I'll make the motion again to approve the policy as presented in our board package, reference the last paragraph on separating invoices out to, um, circumvent the $7,500 limit of purchasing.
Support.
This will be by a roll call. Stillson?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Maxie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
I'm a yes. No nays. Motion carries. Next is a motion to adjourn.
So, move. Support.
Motion by Dennis, supported by Noel, to adjourn the meeting at?
Forty-four.
7:44. Roll call. Gardner?
Yes.
Maxie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Stillson?
Yes.
I'm a yes. No nays. Motion carries. Meeting has adjourned.